Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to our board meeting tonight. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below or at DeAnza. You can go to the corner of the room to get translation. We are heading into our closed session for tonight. Before we do, we are here to listen to any public comment there might be about our closed session items. The public gets two minutes for public comment per speaker. The closed session items that we will be discussing are conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, public employee discipline dismissal, release and complaint. I'm sorry, and public employee discipline dismissal, release and complaint. Staff, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have one public comment.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Ms. Alon Harrison, please unmute yourself.
Hello, can y'all hear me, boy? Can y'all hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes, we can.
Oh, good evening, board. I would hope that you guys take into consideration when you're looking at that that we need our scout to address the data that's on our LCAP regarding our black students attendance and over identification and detention as a California dashboard states. And I haven't, I'm a very involved parent and I'm the ASAP chair and I haven't heard of any way that our district is planning to address that. I mean, and that needs to be addressed. And I feel that we need to do it as a community and we need to have people like Juanita Towns and Andre Schumaker continue to be in our district. They're staples, they're from the community, and we would like to see them stay in our district to support the work they've done and to support our children succeeding academically for their academic success because we don't feel connected to a lot of the processes that go on in our district. So please, please, I am begging and kind of demanding lightly that you keep our staff that really support and help the parents. And also, I just want to make sure to remind you all that we're working really hard on Juneteenth to, for you guys to come out on June 22nd and support. A pack and my Smikio, so please come out and support the black parents and black students. Thank you. I'm complete.
Ms. Harrison, if you can still hear me, you were cutting in and out. So please, we heard most of your comment, but please continue to email the board your comments just so we can make sure.
Oh, you couldn't hear, you couldn't hear? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yes, I will email you. But I was just saying, keep our black staff, Juanita and that, um, what's that? Dr. Herschel, Dr. Herschel, Schumaker, I would say, keep our black staff. I'm complete.
Thank you.
Close public comment.
Thank you, everyone. We will reconvene for open session at 6:30 tonight. Thank you. Okay, do we need our computers?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Minutes. Thank you very much, Dr. Hurst. Now we'll move to the land acknowledgement. Dr. Hurst, could you please do the land acknowledgement?
Absolutely. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chocheno, Muekma, Clarkin, Kaloney peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
Thank you very much. We're now moving to the labor, land and labor and body acknowledgement. Nope, that's what we just did. Thanks, Ren. Now we're moving to the labor and body part of that acknowledgement. I acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of black and brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember that black and brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. Also acknowledge the continued contribution of labor of the survivors over the centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. We are now moving to the West Contra Costa Unified School District School Board Anti-Racism Statement. The West Contra Costa School District Board of Education is committed to the work of anti-racism, the conscious and active effort to identify, challenge and correct racial inequities in the systems and the institutions within our schools and community. Racism, explicit or implicit, stands in direct conflict to the fundamental principles of WCCUSD education. To carry WCCUSD education into the future, we recognize that we must continually renew and reflect on the roots of racism and develop new ideas to meet the times. Unjust ideas and policies and the racial inequity they produce have shaped us in our schools and our society. We strive to uncover unconscious biases and practice anti-racism as individuals and as board members. We challenge ourselves to persist through the discomfort necessary for growth and learning, to deepen our listening and our examination of racism and oppression, and to develop a strong understanding of how our personal experiences and feelings fit into a larger picture of continual oppression. Each member of our school board individually and collectively is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racist learning environment where each student, staff member and community partner is respected and a valued member of the WCCUSD community. We are uniquely positioned and it is our responsibility to identify and dismantle racist ideas and inequitable policies in ourselves and across the district. Therefore, we commit to supporting anti-racist policies, programs and practices for our children's education and well-being. While building strong and inclusive school communities, we commit to holding each board member accountable towards these goals and moving the work of anti-racism forward. We also commit to holding the West Contra Costa Unified School District staff, students and community to live in these standards of anti-racism in our schools. Dr. Hurst, we are now moving to agenda item B5, roll call. Could you do roll call, please?
One order.
Yes, sir.
I just got the text. It says they came here on Zoom.
Oh, hot mess. Okay. All right, let's see if we can fix that. Oh, they say, okay, let's see the last thing that they heard.
I can hear.
You can hear?
Yeah, I have my AirPods and I just checked.
You heard everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can hear it now.
Okay. So we're good all the way? Everything was heard? Okay. Thank you so very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We are now moving to agenda item B6. Sorry, B5. We're moving to B5, roll call. Dr. Hurst, go ahead.
Thank you so much. President Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone. Present.
Clerk Gonzalez Hoi is absent. Trustee Reckler.
Good evening, I'm present.
Trustee Christian.
Uh, good evening, president.
Trustee Phillips is absent. Student trustee Abdugahparov.
Good evening, president.
And student trustee Paukar is absent. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you so very much. We are now moving to agenda item B6, report ratification of closed session. Dr. Hurst, is there anything to report out?
There's nothing to report out, ma'am.
Thank you so very much. We are now moving to agenda item B7, WCCUSD public comment. This is how to address the board. Members of the public are invited to speak to the board about any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda and is related to issues affecting public education in West Contra Costa. Public comment will last approximately 60 minutes. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. Individuals wishing to speak must submit a WCCUSD public comment form or participating via Zoom individuals need to raise their hand. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Staff, do we have any public comment?
Our first public comment is Kate Burkhardt. Please unmute yourself. Yourself?
I'm sorry. My computer will not let me keep the hand down. I have nothing to say at this point. Thank you. Goodbye. Have a good.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. We are now going to move to item B8, agenda review and adoption. Board, do you have any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is adopted without objection. We're now moving to action item. Again, the public will have the opportunity to make public comment on each action item after the staff presentation. The time allotted for the public comment on each action item will be no more than 10 minutes and one minute per speaker. Dr. Hurst, we're moving to C1, resolution number 2324-78. Dr. Johnson, I believe this is your item.
I don't know why I called your name first, Ren. I don't know. Just, just happened.
Hello? Okay, thank you. Whereas on February 7th, 2024 and March 6th, 2024, the Board of Trustees of the West Contra Costa Unified School District adopted respectively, resolution number 2324-50 and resolution number 2324-57 to reduce or eliminate particular kinds of service and resulting in the layoff of certificated employees by no later than the end of the 2023-2024 school year.
Thank you so very much. Do we have public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Board, do you have questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I don't understand what this action item is about.
Okay, that's a very good question. So I'm going to do a little bit of a summary and then I'm going to have Dr. Johnson do a greater summary because she's literally the expert, right? So way back in February, we started talking about, even before then, but let's say February as the date, we started talking about how we are going to have to decrease the number of employees, right? After we did a lot of work in the budget committee decreasing other things, but how we are, have to decrease employees to be able to reach the standard that the county wants us to have money-wise, right? And so there was work being done to that effect. So there became a list, right? And this is the list of how we have to reduce these employees' risks, reduction in force. It's how we have to reduce these employees and to be able to make a budget where the county will say, you're good, right? So that happened in February and then people had to get that information by March 15th legally. They had to get it by March 15th. So we took a, we looked at it in February. It was like, okay, cool, got it. Then we came back in March 15th and we were like, all right, we got to vote on it, right? And so the majority of the board said, yep, we got to do what we got to do, right? We have to vote yes on this list. And then HR said, got it, thank you. The county was like, good, we see it. And then HR was like, let me do a whole lot of work between March and May to see if anything can change and we can bring anybody back that got the layoff notice, right? The 15th notice. Bring anybody back or what we can do in the, in between March and May. This is the final vote in May after they did all of that work. We, the vote that we take tonight will say, county, we still did what you told us to do, right? And it also will free up HR to say, okay, now that they've made that vote, hey, let's look at these vacant positions and see if we can put you in one of these vacant positions. Does that make sense? What we're voting for tonight is more of, you know, let me stop while I'm ahead, Ren. That's, I did good, right?
You did well. I'd just like to add that many of the positions on the list are also grant-funded. Grant-funded means we are given money based on grants. Some of them end and some of them may be recurring. However, we have not received those funds. So we can't hire people if we don't have the funds for those positions. So that is also part of this layoff list.
I have an analogy for that. It's like you know your birthday coming, but you haven't got the money from your grandmama yet. So you can't spend the money that you know coming in the card, but you can't spend it until you get the birthday card with the money in it. That's the grant funds.
Correct. So if those funds returned and the grant is written for positions to be returned, positions would come back.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? You good?
Uh, yes. So can you just confirm what we're voting on though?
So we're voting on the final list.
Oh, okay.
We're voting on the final list. The list that we saw in February got shorter in March and now it's even shorter in May, but we're voting on that list.
Okay.
And to help you with your vote, everyone on this list has offered a teaching position because we do have positions in our school district.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Board, can I get a motion?
I'll go ahead and move resolution 2324-78, reducing particular kinds of services of certificated employees.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Board, do we have any comments? You have a comment? Go ahead.
Well, I was basically going to ask, um, it just come, coming back for the 15th again or, or it, it totally locks on this right now.
This particular resolution that we're voting on now? Okay, so what we're voting on now is the list because there's dates attached to this also. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Notices have to be out by May 15th or, yes, out by May 15th.
So does that make sense, Trustee Christian?
Yeah, it makes, makes sense.
This will not come back to the board. This is the final notice. And I want to make one correction. It's May 14th.
May 14th. That's why I can't come back on the 15th.
Correct.
Okay. Because this is the, this, where we are now is the special meeting because our next, uh, our next regular meeting is on the 15th and that would have missed the deadline. So what we're doing now is taking the vote so HR can then move to the next step of the process, which is offering positions.
Correct.
To fill the vacancies that are, that we have in, that we have in the district. But that's why this vote is needed to push that next step.
Well, the law requires.
The law requires that to push.
By May 14th.
Okay. Any other comments? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
I have a comment and that is, is that this is probably the most difficult thing I've done on this board. So for this and for the next resolution, I just want people to know that this is not easy to do, but is absolutely necessary for fiscal survival.
Thank you so much. Any other comment?
Yes, I want to echo the same words that Trustee Reckler just said. You know, this is one of the difficult things, um, you know, that's put before us at this time. And this, this is very hard, you know, because, you know, it's turned about the welfare of many, you know? So it's, it's very difficult. I mean, if this, you know, if I survive as a district, man, and it's, it's tough. And so, man, it's so difficult. But we got to survive. That's it.
Board and district staff, know that we all feel your pain. Community, we feel your pain. We also are put in these positions to make our decisions, but we're also put in these positions to find solutions. And I think that that's what we need to lean on now because that's what HR is doing. HR is looking for solutions to maintain people in our district because we know that having people in the district that care about the kids, people in the district that do the work is a value additive. So the work that HR and all central staff have been doing is looking, searching, trying to figure out how can we keep people? I know that this is a difficult vote. It's been a difficult conversation since before February. What we are doing at this moment is illegal compliance and releasing HR to go and find places that they can to fill the vacancies that we have. I appreciate the difficulty in this, but I also know that we had to do this on the county end. We had to do this. So this is not only legally, we have to be legally compliant, but this is to prevent the county from coming in. So don't ever forget that. We are doing the best we can in a horrible situation, but this is the best we can. And again, we're always going to be heavy on issues and light on people because we really appreciate the hard work that has been done by district staff, our lawyers, by our, our people who are on the other end of getting a pink slip because that's never easy. So it's hard, but let's do what we have to do. All right, board. Here we go to the vote. Student trustee, student trustee Abdugahparov.
Um, am I allowed to abstain?
You are allowed to do whatever you want, Ren.
Abstain.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you. Anima, yes. Thank you so much. We are now moving to, we're moving to resolution 2324-79, classified lack of funding. Uh, Dr. Johnson, this is your item, please.
Yes, thank you. Whereas on February 7th, 2024 and March 6th, 2024, the Board of Trustees of the West Contra Costa Unified School District adopted respectively, resolution number 2324-49 and resolution number 2324-56 to reduce or eliminate classified services resulting in the layoff of classified employees by no later than the end of the 2023-2024 school year.
Thank you so very much. Uh, staff, are there any public comments?
We have no public comment.
Thank you very much. Board, do we have any questions? And student trustee, for clarification, this is the same thing except it's for the different. So instead of teachers, now you have, um, the classified side of it. So it's the same thing that we did in February. It's the same timeline. So it's just different, um, units that we employ.
Okay, thank you. I was wondering, as I'm looking, I was like, this doesn't look too different than the other one. But yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other question? All right, board, let's go to a motion. Is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and move resolution 2324-79, classified lack of funding.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Trustee Christian. We are now moving to comments. Board, are there any comments? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Again, I want people to know that I don't take this lightly at all and this is terrible. This is the worst thing that you could do. Um, but I do have fiduciary responsibility to steward the funds of district and ensure its financial health. And district's fund, financial situation right now is not healthy at all, at all. There are significant challenges. This has to be done so that we can retain some sort of independence. There's a lot of conversations about how do we build this? It's not the time for that. I'm hoping that we can with the strategic plan have that discussion. But for right now, we have to do what needs to get done to ensure independence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee, any other comments from trustees? I want to repeat what was said in the last comment. I'll echo what Trustee Reckler said. One of our main jobs is to ensure the financial health of the district. We have done everything before. We have done the work before. We had the budget subcommittee. We looked at all of our contracts. We looked at the 4,000s and the 5,000s. We had tough conversations down at the district level. There was reductions in every department. We, we literally gave it our all. Could we have done more? That's an opinion that people may have. Did we do a whole lot? Yes, we did. We were up against the wall and we had to, to what Trustee Christian said, survive. And we did what we had to do to live another day. What we are now doing after we had this re-energize of breath is to look at our systems and to look at how we approach all things, including our budget and what we value in our budget. And to the point again, this is a legal compliance. It also gives HR the opportunity to fill those vacancies, to go out and have these conversations. This is hard for us. It's a lot harder for y'all because y'all look people in the face and have to have these conversations. And we as a board need to acknowledge that because it's not easy looking at someone in the face and knowing that that's their livelihood. We know these people on the list. You're looking them in the face and saying, this is the next step. But you're also not coming without hope. Dr. Johnson, you are literally saying, hey, I get it. I'm doing my best to find a place because I know that you are a valued member of our community. The board sees how hard this is for you, and we appreciate you doing not only your job, but doing it with humanity because that's very necessary. And so we thank you for that. Thank you for your high level of empathy. Thank you for your steadfastness in finding positions for people and trying to do that. Our lawyers that are here, thank you for maintaining us in compliance because we have to have that. So we appreciate that. Thank you for all the work, Board, that you have done to ensure that we are, we, this is our last resort. We are only doing what's our last resort. So thank you, everyone. We are, um, I'm complete. We are moving to the vote. Okay, so let's go to the vote. Uh, Trustee Christian, second the motion. We are moving to the vote. Uh, trustee, Student trustee Abdugheparov.
Um, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. Uh, thank you so much, Dr. Johnson. Thank you so much to our legal team. Thank you, Dr. Hurst, and to your team, and thank you, Board of Trustees. Board of Trustees, we are now moving to Item D, Comments from the Board of Education and Future Agenda Items. Board, let's give everyone three minutes. You can have three minutes for your public comment. But before we do public comment, we're just going to take a minute to kind of center ourselves, and then you guys come up with, um, center yourself and come up with your public comment. We're going to take a minute to do that. Audience, you'll hear just a minute silence while we gather ourselves. Thank you for your patience. Okay, board members. Anyone ready to do their public comment? Does anyone have public comment? Student trustee, please, go ahead.
Um, well, I did just want to acknowledge all the hard work that this board does, um, especially, um, Johnson, I think it is. I think it's, it's really, um, moving to see how much you care about your work, um, and to hear you acknowledge that, you know, there is, as much as it is hard for us to make this decision, it's also hard for the people that have to break the news and the people who have to receive the news. Um, I think that sometimes the board gets a lot of, um, criticism, um, because there is a lot of things that like, unfortunately, like hard decisions that have to be made that people don't want to hear, but like being here, I see like how much work and thought goes in, and I did want to just acknowledge that. Um, then say sometimes we've got to cut the board a little bit of slack because there's so many people working to find the best solution, um, and we're making the best of a bad situation. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. You are, uh,
beyond your age, Fran. That's very good. That's very good comment. Anyone else have comment?
Any other comments before I make a comment and close this out? Go ahead, Trustee Christian.
Yes, I want to say, you know, this is one of the most difficult, uh, situations right here to, you know, that's been made. Um, when you care about people, care about the community, you care about the students, you care about all those, and you want to make the right decisions and do the right thing, and you want to see things done right, and, um, with our difficult of, uh, the, the situation of our district, you know, we got to step to the plate to do more, to improve, and to be more innovative in making things happen for our district. And hopefully we can, you know, get to that point of really, you know, um, making, you know, seeing things just done right. Um, I'm just very concerned, and so it was difficult, difficult, uh, it was very difficult making this decision, uh, this evening. And so, um, that's it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much, Trustee Christian. Trustee Reckler, any comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Board of Trustees, thank you so much for having hard conversations in a soft way. Thank you so much for making a very difficult decision to maintain local control of our district. That's what this decision was. How do we maintain local control of our district by not having the county come in, by meeting the financial obligation that they put upon us? Once again, Dr. Johnson and your staff, Dr. Hurst and the rest of your staff, thank you for, again, having hard conversations in a soft way. Thank you for cleaning up internal controls to where we ensure that once we get right, we stay right because that's really valuing people. The real value is, once you make this hard decision, don't turn around and have to make it again. Once we get right, we stay right, and we clean up our system controls to make sure that happens. We make sure that we have the accountability where we need. We make sure that we're not wasting funds in another way. So we are doing all of that work. So that is the value that we're having towards our community to say, again, once we get right, we stay right. So thank you for your leadership. To Trustee Christians', um, to Trustee Christians' comment about thinking outside the box, that's your strategic plan. That's that moonshot thinking that I will never forget the phrase when you first brought it to us. How do we generate income? How do we look at how our programs are working? How do we become a desirable district for people to come in? Those are all the things that you are leading us to, and we appreciate that because that, again, will bring in income. How are we looking at our attendance? How are we looking at our enrollment? How are we doing all the things that help with our financial outcome? This is, this is where we're going, everyone. It is, we are making sure everyone understands how the system works and everyone has a hand in keeping it working to where it benefits every student, every child, every family, and every, every way that we know we want our students to end up being the best version of themselves. But it doesn't come easy. It doesn't come easy, but it's coming. And we are actually moving in this district. I know this was difficult. I appreciate all of you. Tonight was a hard night. Please go do self-care and take care of yourself. I'm looking directly at Dr. Johnson. Please go do self-care and take care of yourself. We will be back. Our next scheduled board meeting will be on May 15th, 2024, and it's our regular board meeting, and it's going to be at Levanya Dejean Middle School. Please, everyone, do not forget that it is still Teacher Appreciation Week, Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week, and we are now officially adjourned. Thank you. Have a great evening.